Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that the municipality of Jasper respectfully acknowledges that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper are on Treaty Six and Eight Territories, as well as the Maytee Region Four. This land is traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Dinesa, the Hiawak, Anishinaabe, Sequimac, Stony Dakota, and Maytee. Today, we have the agenda before us. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is nine thirty-two. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Mayor Allen?
I would like to add to the agenda item six point one correspondence, which is a piece of correspondence we have received from ACFA request on a letter of support at Elvedasta. Perhaps we attended today, but there appears to be a bit of urgency, and we can understand that some things have been missed in the last week or so. So if we could add that letter request for support from the municipality of six point one.
Thank you, Mayor Allen. Counselor Wilson?
Okay, Intergovernmental Incan Agenda.
Ten point one. Any other additions? Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda with additions six point one ACFA and ten point one Intergovernmental Incan. Counselor Calorampi, all in favor? That's moved. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number four, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two Committee of the Whole Minutes. Are there any corrections to be made to those? Okay, business arising from the minutes? Counselor Mallett?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I'd like to just ask the question on the status of item seven point eight, the short term the mural trees and municipality. We have an update on that.
Mr. Givens?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Demota. I provide very group updates. I know that operations and parks did remove the trees that were in question, particularly adjacent to the Kevan Creek corridor, the ones that were on private public property specifically. I have a meeting with park representatives later this week to talk about a more comprehensive approach and what that might look like both on public and private property, and anything that would come forward, come out of that would come to council. I think there's a ongoing recognition that this is an important issue and that it's important to individual property owners as well as respective trees that may be on their property. And so we hope to be able to come forward with some additional recommendations going forward, but those trees that were described to council previously had been.
Thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Mallett, and thank you for the information Mr. Given. Any anything else to address in the past minutes? Okay. Do we need to move to accept those for the next meeting, the agenda? Okay. It's my first time in the newer format, so. Thank you for bearing with me. Okay, we're moving on to agenda item five, delegations. Normally, we have three minutes for presentations, and I understand there's a bit of an attachment here today, so we're going to ask you if you can post that on social media and we can all watch it later. Moly Kenny? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. You're about to launch into item five point one.
Yes, I am.
And I want to take this opportunity to declare conflict of interest under section one seventy-one sub C of the Municipal Government Act, and I will take the counsel chambers and somebody can let me know when the presentation is over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one person that wasn't here when I asked to have their phones turned off. Okay, we'll wait for the mayor to read chambers and yeah. Thank you for letting me add some levity to the situation. As I said, normally, we allow three minutes, but I understand you have a video presentation as well, and I think that at this time and the situation we're in, we can all use a little bit of uplifting. So I'm grateful. The timing's really good that you guys are here today. So I would like to turn the floor to you. We have Mr. Logan Ireland and Mr. Oliver Andrew here with Uplift Jasper Mural Festival Agenda five point one. Please go ahead, Jim.
Hello, Committee of the Whole. Thank you very much for having us. It's a real it's a real kind of surreal moment for us to be here this time last year. This idea was still just kind of a dream, and you know, the town and all of you, all you guys that supported us made it a reality. So we wanted to come in and really appreciate you guys giving us some time. The municipality was hugely helpful throughout the whole process of making Uplift a reality from your advice and your support. Some of you people reaching out on personal levels and pulling things together last minute and making it all happen, from allowing your staff to use their resources to support us. Christopher Reed and his team was invaluable. He was available, seemed like twenty-four seven. Just making sure we got our insurance and our I's dotted and our T's crossed. So thank you guys so much. Uplift has always been a community-led and a community benefiting idea. So having your voices and your opinions, you people representing our community is so important to the success of Uplift and its longevity. So we're really excited to talk with you guys and hear formally how you thought the first year of the festival went. So I just wanted to open it up to see if you guys have some direct feedback and also just to lay it out there. If you want to talk to us privately about the upcoming years, please reach out at any time, and we'd love to sit down and have a coffee and get all your ideas. So yeah, does anyone have any comments they'd like to share at this time?
Counselors, good free. Counselor Wilson?
Not sure how to word this, but yeah, it was an event that I think pretty much the whole community got behind, and it was just great that you guys kind of approached the council and that we got to be involved in it as well. And so, yeah, there's so many different issues and even events that occur that, you know, are could be divisive, whereas this was just so brought the community together. So it was really enjoyable to be a part of them before to hopefully see it again.
Counselor Wachs?
I just wanted to make the comment that I have a memory of being in the TGP parking lot during the the event that you held there and just the incredible sense of community that that appeared there. We saw I saw very elderly people and very young people and children running around, and it just the real sense of community coming together and really it really spoke to the title of Uplift. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Calorampi?
Thanks. Thank you, guys. It was great. And also, I've seen a lot of visitors go around and take photographs. I've had a lot of comments from different visitors in town, how beautiful the murals are, and what it's so great for our town. It's just uplifted the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ball?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I too echo the sentiments of counselors that already spoken. It was a really great event, really look forward to next season. And now when I walk around town, I see blank walls all over the place. And just, oh, go there, go there. Yeah, so thank you. It was really great.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Mallett, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. Just one thing, and I may have missed it, and I when I see the murals, is there recognition of the artist actually on the mural or in the area? Where I parked at the grocery people, I haven't been able to see that, but I'm hoping that we have an ongoing legacy of how, A, the festival came about in a very short format, but also recognizing the artist and the significance of their work.
Yeah. Soon we'll be adding more. We're going to show a video today, which will kind of go over sort of the format that we want to do moving forward as far as, you know, artist representation and the media that's involved in the festival. And each artist has their own tag, so some it's kind of invisible. The one by the Barapaw Bakery can barely make it out, but that's the that's the idea, right? Their name is sort of hidden in the image. So the best way for us to do that is just more representation on the website, and hopefully that catches on. People can learn that way.
Thank you. Appreciate. I appreciate that the artist does want the recognition, but they do make it part of the artwork.
Yeah, we do also plan to add our the Uplift logo so that we can tie it just subtly in the corner so that tourists come can find the website and then find more information about the artists from that. So we're in the process. That'll be going up. We're putting an anti-graffiti coating on on top of the murals, like an epoxy coating to protect them long term. So when that's ready, right before that goes up, we'll put that. That's very honorable.
Thank you, Counselor Mallett. Counselor Wilson?
Just a follow-up question. So it sounds like it was, you know, wildly successful in the community. Was it financially successful for you guys? Is it viable to do again? I know you had some pretty large expenses. Just the lifts alone are pretty massive in cost. So, yeah, it looks like you guys are here. I hope you were somewhat financially successful the first year, but really, that's the my question.
Yeah, we we got by with an amazing amount of support from the community. The murals, as you can see, are professional grade. These people are world-class. Even our local artists really stepped up to the plate and gave us his best work. So that definitely costs money. And in the first year, we had amazingly a lot of support and excitement from some really key players in the community, and we expect that some of that will continue, and we'll also be looking for more support as well, because in many cases, the wall on which the mural is located, that business or building owner supported the mural financially quite largely, and of course, we'll be moving to new walls now. So we will certainly need, first, Uplift to continue to be successful, will need continued support from different members of the community as we move forward, for sure.
Thank you very much. Well, I have to say myself, considering my my new job and my location, I'm in a little bit of a fishbowl. So I get a lot of locals and a lot of visitors, and the visitors, you know, you know, we've all spoken to the the community aspect of it, but just being received and still people talking about it, coming in and asking about the initiative and how impressed they are that, you know, there's some really nice artwork. And, you know, to top that off, like a little to no vandalism of this, so you could see the level of respect throughout the community and how it's been embraced by everyone from, you know, local residents to other people that like to tag things in the community as well as visitors alike. So I think it's been a positive thing for everyone, and I look forward to seeing this continue. And congratulations, Sean. Thank you for bringing us here.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'd like to move on to the video if we can.
Thanks for taking some time to watch that, everybody. Thanks, Emma, for getting that queued up for us. Nice job. So that was Keenan Silence, our local artist, local Jasper, born and raised here. One of the commitments that Uplift has is to the local community. So each year, we want to try to find a new local artist that we can help launch and give space to share their ideas. Worked out amazingly well with Keenan. He did a beautiful design that represents his town and his heritage, and it got him a lot of exposure. And since then, he's had a few new commercial contracts for murals. And we hope that his career just continues to keep skyrocketing. So thanks to everybody that made that happen for Keenan, because he's a local guy, and we want to see more of that. That kind of leads into our ask of council this year. We love the support level we got last year. If you guys are able to offer Chris Reed and his team and support in that way, that's really invaluable and a serious benefit to Uplift. So if you consider giving us resources in that way, that would be amazing. And also, if you're able to consider bringing Uplift into your applications for grants and funding and directing funds to us so that you're kind of more directly financially supporting us, that would hugely appreciated and beneficial for the festival as well. We're committed to paying our artists what they deserve. A lot of artists, you know, there's the term struggling artist out there, because some people don't realize the work that it takes to do something like this. These artists all designed for three to four weeks, and then they came and painted eight, ten hours a day for another two to three weeks. It's their livelihood, and we want to make sure that they're compensated really, really fairly. So you check out all our budgets online. The minimum cost of a mural is, you know, it's over ten grand for all of these murals. So it's a considerable chunk of change, plus we have to rent the machinery and do all the other things behind the scenes. So there's lots that goes into it. So we don't have like an exact number to ask for from council, but anything that you're able to find in that range that would help support would be super appreciated and would go along with.
Well, I thank you for the presentation and appreciate the ask. I'm glad I got to see that, because now I want to go and watch the movie, and then that'll give me more of an attachment to for when I go by there and understand and get a better connection to the artist. So it was great that we showcased Keenan, that you showcased Keenan here today. As far as the asset, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the council, but from my experience, I think maybe the best avenue is to maybe work with administration. We've got budgets for the municipality coming up. So if we have a better idea of what the ask could be, whether it's going to come through community development or have an external ask, usually we've asked, you know, outside agencies and or the term I'm looking for, societies of such to come forward with some type of formal ask. So this one's a little bit loose. If we can get a better idea of what you might need or in the time that before we do go to budgets, if you do come up with a better idea, I think that will be helpful for council. Does everybody feel okay with that direction? And Mr. Given?
Deputy Mayor, certainly administration is happy to support a game this year in terms of the given kind of investment straightforward, and I don't see any challenges with that. We do have our new policy that would ensure any requests sort of was through, and if there's some sort of formal arrangement, then we you know, figure out how to apply that new relationship with external groups policy. And if the group does have a specific request, it would be helpful if council, council could take a couple of different approaches. The group could submit a specific request for the specific dollar round, and then council could refer that dollar amount to the budget, and then it can be discussed in context of the overall budget and council's priorities. Or council could today refer the matter of financial support for Uplift to the budget discussions. And then in the interim time, administration could discuss with the organizers what their amount that they might request would be, and then we could reflect that to council the budget. So you don't necessarily need to submit a letter with a figure today or an order to get it onto the agenda budget. Council could choose to refer this to budget by motion today with the number to be filled in by dialogue between the organizers and administration prior to budget. So when we show up, we can tell you, well, this is what they asked for. So sort of an either or, if you want to submit a letter or something that's a formal request with a dollar amount, it's fine. Or if council wants to refer to budget, you could do so today, and then you would fill in that dollar amount and present it to your budget time.
Exactly how I was feeling. It's so nice to be supported by someone that can speak more eloquent than you. So how does council, how would council like to proceed? Counselor Mallett?
My suggestion would be that we receive the presentation for information and refer any future budget requests from the Uplift Festival to administration to incorporate it into the two thousand and twenty-three budget. I think what I'm hearing administration saying is probably the process. So I would make that recommendation.
In a form of a motion?
In a form of a motion.
Does everyone understand the motion? All in favor? Great, that's carried. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right, would someone like to call in Mayor Ireland? I would have got you. All right, while we're waiting for the mayor to get settled back in here, we don't have another agenda item five point two on the agenda. However, because we are in delegations and we do have other members of the public here, would anyone else like to speak at this moment to council before we move forward to correspondence? Okay. Right, appreciate that. So that'll bring us to agenda item six correspondence. So we have Mayor Ireland's addition to the agenda six point one. If you may, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I'm just trying to bring up a request, but I can tell you without putting my finger on it yet, that in the last day or so, we've been contacted by ACFA looking for a letter of support for federal funding. ACFA has been an institution in the community for many years, and it would not be unusual for us to support them in their efforts to secure funding from outside sources, including federal sources. Given some timing issues, and those may in part be related to staff turnover, there is a pending application with a due date, which I if I recall correctly, is September nineteenth, which is just around the corner. And so I have asked that this matter be added to today's agenda, and for ease of everyone, I would propose that council merely direct, pardon me, committee direct the mayor to sign a letter of support rather than have committee make a recommendation for council if we will be that it's going to take this potentially over the deadline that they're facing. And it's not an unusual request for a community group. The timing is offered. So the motion that I would have arising from this is that committee direct the mayor to committee direct the mayor to extend a letter of support in behalf of the grant application by ACFA.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. And for clarification, ACFA stands for l'association canadienne française de Jasper, or de Alberta. Sorry, and that's the Jasper one, which translates to the French-Canadian Association of Alberta. Apologize for my French there. Does everyone understand the motion? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Using my pronunciation a little better. I think. All right, thank you, council. We'll hit 10:01. That brings us on to new business agenda item seven. The first item under seven is 7.1, the Emergency Advisory Committee update. Who would like to speak to that? I'll start with you, Mayor Ireland. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to invite, it is a report on behalf of the Emergency Advisory Committee, but I'm going to invite Mr. Given to introduce the topic and some of the process that gets this here, and I will Mr. Given, please.
Absolutely, Your Worship and Deputy Mayor Demota. Just briefly, by way of background, council, remember that it may, you passed the updated emergency management bylaw, which created a number of different roles within the municipality and delegated certain responsibilities of council to some portion of those. And so it's just that His Worship is going to speak to some of those different roles and entities within the organization. There's a whole bunch of three-letter acronyms, and we thought that it might be a little bit useful to remind both the public and our guests what those acronyms mean and sort of what the associated roles are for some of the parties that are responsible for emergency management in the municipality now with our emergency management bylaw. First, His Worship is going to be speaking to the Emergency Advisory Committee. This is a committee made up of elected officials of council. That is the mayor and two counselors. And council has delegated a lot of council's responsibilities to that committee. And specifically, the roles of the Emergency Advisory Committee are to, in non-emergency times, to guide the development of the municipality's emergency plans and provide advice and comment to administration in developing those plans. During an emergency or disaster, the Emergency Advisory Committee is, the bylaw then provides that the members shall maintain regular council member duties to the extent possible and to advise council with respect to political, financial, and resourcing support to the EMA. The Emergency Advisory Committee is also a central point for administration to provide updates to council. But as council members will know, I was also providing updates to you as a liaison and as your CAO on a just-for-a-day basis. Another area that is in our bylaw is the Emergency Management Agency. The agency, the EMA, is the CAO, the Director of Protective and Legislative Services, their chief and other staff. And this is really the body within our municipal organization that's responsible for setting the plan and guiding the development of that plan for emergency response, disaster response. And then finally, there is the Director of Emergency Management, or the DEM, the DDM. Director Madon is our Director of Emergency Management, and she was the incident commander for this incident. She was partnered, of course, with our Deputy DEM, our DDEM, who was Chief Conte, and they did have the opportunity towards the end, not the end, I suppose, but towards the end of the acute phase of this, to do a little bit of switching off with the DEM and the Deputy DEM. But they're the ones who are responsible during an emergency for acting and guiding the actions of the municipality and the Emergency Coordination Center. So you will hear about the EAC and the EMA and the DEM. But at a very high level, the EAC is the elected officials who are being briefed and providing advice. The EMA is really, in this instance, was me being that liaison between the EAC and the people operating in the emergency, and the people operating in the emergency were the DEM and the ECC, the Emergency Coordination Center. Your Worship, I think with that sort of primer, I'll hand it over to you and just say that we really entered into our emergency operations on early September 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Four members of council I had earlier this morning provided a bit of a haste. A written report has been brought to my attention that in the opening paragraph, I made an error, so consider that a draft document. And I will fix that now and fix it again later. The report is as follows, the emergency generated by the electric power outage caused by the Chedlin wildfire provided the first opportunity for an emergency response style making of the newly constituted Emergency Advisory Committee, so the EAC, as Mr. Given has indicated. Interestingly, the committee had earlier met to review emergency planning documents, including the community evacuation plan with staff and with Parks Canada. As noted by Mr. Given, the potential in this case for an emergency was recognized on Friday, September 7th, with the start of the Chedlin wildfire. Municipal staff activated the ECC in a limited sense on the morning of Saturday, September 3rd, in order to be better prepared for the eventuality of a more immediate emergency. That situation did in fact arise early on the morning of Monday, September 5th, with the loss of the ATCO overhead transmission line, which delivers power to all of Jasper and almost all of Jasper National Park. The EAC held its first meeting in respect to the power outage with the Director of the ECC, Christine Madon, the Deputy Director of the ECC, Matt McConte, and our CAO, Mr. Given, mentioning at 4 o'clock on Monday, September 5th. So later in the day, the power went down. During that initial meeting with the EAC, which consists of Counselor Laxer, Melvin, and myself, the committee received a briefing from the DEM and the Deputy DEM and from the CAO. The committee was provided with an update and made inquiries regarding various items, including the evolving fire status, the status of the ATCO transmission line, efforts and available resources to provide substitute generated power for the community, priorities for electrical re-energization, proposals and limitations of re-energization as advised by ATCO, including service to areas south of Highway 16, the status of the municipal response, the role of emergency social services, and actions taken by the Evergreens Foundation in respect to the voluntary transfer of independent residents from Alpine Science Seers Lodge. Members of the EAC additionally inquired as to the safety and well-being of individuals, including vulnerable populations within the community, life safety issues concerning the use, for example, of barbecues and outdoor cooking stalls indoors, and discussed messaging to discourage that type of use. Committee members also discussed private sector efforts to reduce incoming visitation to the community and to the national park, and regarding resources which the private sector might be able to make available to address the power outage. The EMA undertook to convey such offers of resources to ATCO for consideration as appropriate. Members of the EAC also addressed the frequency of updates from the municipality and the Emergency Management Agency to council and offered advice in that regard, which advice was accepted in action, and counselors will be aware of the the increased frequency of communication going to council. The EAC was advised at that time that the recommendation of the ECC was that a declaration to state of local emergency, a SOUL, was not required. Upon such a declaration, the legislation provides the opportunity for the affected municipality to exercise exceptional powers, none of which powers were contemplated at that time. The EC, the EAC, accepted the recommendations of the ECC with respect to the declaration, the collective declaration of SOUL, and otherwise commended the ECC, the DEM, the Deputy DEM, CAO with respect to all efforts today, particularly the quality and frequency of communications to the public, and provided advice to continue those efforts. On Tuesday, September 6th, members of the EAC received along with council another update from our CAO regarding the Chedlin wildfire, the ongoing ATCO response, and the evolving municipal response. The EAC convened again at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, September 7th, again with the DEM and the Deputy DEM and CAO. In addition to receiving an update on all current matters, the EAC also had the opportunity to address questions directly to the ATCO incident commander, Amanda Mattern, who joined the meeting virtually. Members of the committee posed questions regarding the availability of resources, other options for securing generators and generator electricity, including railway locomotives or generator cars, other sources of large generators, capacity limits, technical challenges, load reduction options, including lowering demand. That continued until power was lost to the community, and Miss Mattern was required to excuse herself to deal with the ongoing emergency. But she was, during her time with us, able to provide responses satisfactory to most of our inquiries, and in some instances, for example, we've been inquired about hotel occupancy as a function of load capacity. So recognizing that a hotel, if empty, would still be a draw, how much does occupancy will affect that draw, and in cases like that. Miss Mattern took the question away for consideration by ATCO staff. As part of the briefing provided by the DEM, the Deputy DEM, and the CAO, the committee was advised of specific concerns relating to the wastewater treatment plant. In particular, the committee discussed the potential consequences of a loss of both ATCO-generated generated power and our own backup generated power to WWTP and where that will lead the community. At that meeting on Wednesday afternoon, the EAC was also advised of actions taken by Grand Elder Public School Division with respect to the power outage, including closure of schools. And we discussed again the issue of available resources and the absence, continued absence of a need to declare a state of local emergency. The EAC took that opportunity on Wednesday afternoon to inquire regarding the wellness of members of the ECC and other municipal staff, recognizing that the emergency arose Friday ahead of proposed long weekend staff had already been working the full week, and had worked through the weekend, and it was midweek by then, and we were concerned about staff well-being without any break, and in a very tense situation. The EAC also used the September 7th meeting as an opportunity to confirm messaging for a virtual meeting, which had been scheduled for later that evening between the CAO and the mayor on behalf of the committee with members of the Board of Directors of Tourism Jasper. A letter was prepared and shared with the Tourism Jasper Board members and other industry stakeholders, which, as council always, was subsequently shared with council and publicly. The meeting with the Board of Directors provided an opportunity to confirm status of various aspects of the emergency, municipal and ATCO priorities, ongoing efforts toward power restoration, and both ongoing and emergency, pardon me, ongoing and emerging concerns of the municipality. The meeting also provided an opportunity for participants, that is, the meeting with the Board of Directors of Tourism Jasper, to exchange information and for the municipality to hear perspectives, concerns, suggestions, and messaging from the Board of Directors of Tourism Jasper and from those individual industry operators who were present. The EAC convened again on Friday, September 9th, at 2:30 PM. Apart from receiving a current status update, members inquired regarding additional backup generator support for the wastewater treatment plant. We discussed the uptake of private generator use, particularly in the commercial sector. We discussed opportunity and efforts to reduce demand, and we discussed historical responses to prior significant power outages, particularly in response to ongoing talk within the community about what may have happened in the past. And we discussed the ongoing impact on both residents and businesses in the community. Members also used that meeting on Friday afternoon to confirm a list of direct requests to be conveyed to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and other provincial officials at a virtual meeting, which had been scheduled for later on that Friday afternoon. The EAC had recognized the need to elevate some of our efforts between municipality occupant parks Canada to a political level, particularly with the provincial government. With the assistance of our MLA Martin Wong, the committee was able to arrange a virtual meeting with Minister of Municipal Affairs, Rick and Piper, which included the Associate Minister of Natural Gas and Electric Power, Dale Mallie, again, our MP, Mr. Martin Wong, and other provincial representatives. That meeting was scheduled to be held at 4:15 on Friday, September 9th. Interestingly, we began the meeting about on time on a web-based program, and it lasted mere minutes before internet connections and power constraints forced us to convert to a telephone conference call, but we easily all adapted to that and continued the meeting over the telephone. The EAC employed that opportunity to briefly extend, briefly explain the extent of the continuing emergency to the minister and his officials, and again, to briefly outline the losses and the severe disruption economically, socially, physically, mentally, and emotionally to individuals, businesses, to the municipality, and to the entire community caused by the power outage. The committee's first request to the province was to inquire at the highest levels of ATCO whether there were any requirements whatsoever for additional resources. The Associate Minister undertook to action that request and responded by telephone to myself late the following day on Saturday afternoon, that he had in fact been in touch with ATCO leadership, who confirmed, which was entirely consistent with the advice from the ATCO representatives on the ground in Jasper, that ATCO had all required resources to to address the matter that the critical needs that they had at that time were time to adjust to the technical demands and the complexities of adding to the generators to the site. And we also, of course, needed safe access for water restoration crews in the area of the downed transmission lines. Those are factors that no one else could address for them. In the context of the second ask to the province, the committee explained to the minister and to the provincial representatives that in our circumstance, the entire community of Jasper functions as an integral part of the local tourism offer, and is in fact a tourism product. By analogy, we argued that if, for example, an agricultural community in Alberta suffered a devastating By analogy, we argued that if, for example, an agricultural community in Alberta suffered a devastating loss of product. Loss of all the props. As a result of a natural weather event, a hail tornado or drought. Provincial disaster relief would undoubtedly be made available. Similarly, we submitted disaster relief should be made available to individuals and to businesses in Jasper. Who have lost income or who have incurred unexpected expenses as a result of the power outage caused. By the wildfire. And say that the, on behalf of the committee, that provincial officials readily and without hesitation. Acknowledged that disaster relief could be made available and they undertook to start work to investigate. Options and processes on our behalf. And they have since made contact. Through our CAO to raise with financial personnel within the municipality to further that initiative. Provincial officials cautioned, however, that all disaster relief programs are subject to eligibility requirements, including. Precise record keeping and that all relief would be subject to an insurability review. The municipality for its part was certainly able to confirm that precise records have been maintained since the activation of. ECC. The municipality agreed to help extend the message to affected individuals and. The businesses that their first contact should be with their own insurance provider. I spoke with the Executive Director of the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce on the following day, the Saturday. To encourage her to help circulate that requirement to members of the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce. As its third ask, the ECC requested confirmation from the province. That no declaration of a state of local emergency was required to be made in order to access any provincial disaster. Fund in the program and provincial officials. Provided that confirmation at that time during the primary meeting. They did, however, use that question to again reemphasize the need to first consider private insurance options. And reiterate that provincial disaster relief is not a substitute for. Insurance products available on the market. So those discussions continue with respect to accessing. Provincial disaster relief at the same time as. Kind gesture of support and recognizing the challenges facing our own municipal administration in place of the ongoing emergency. That provincial officials also offered to investigate on our behalf the availability of. Federal relief programs for individual businesses. So that was ongoing. The most recent meeting of the EAC occurred three o'clock yesterday afternoon. At that time, the committee received an update from our CAO. Mr. Don by that time had been given a day off and Mr. Fonte being the boost to the ongoing work of the ECC. Members were advised that Atco had successfully brought their generator capacity online. And were by that time that successfully provided uninterrupted power to. All parts of the townsite excluding, of course. Those particular properties who had voluntarily opted to remain on their own generators. And to those properties who extend our heartfelt gratitude to show community support by those. Businesses and individuals to make the limited power available to others who don't have that resource and that has been. Greatly accepted as a gesture by, by those elements in our community. The EAC was also advised that work was then underway to replace poles and structures damaged by. The wildfire. As of yesterday afternoon, no firm date for repairs to and reactivation of the. Overground, overground transmission grid line was available. I'm not sure if it's available yet this morning, but we do know that the work is underway. And at yesterday's meeting, the EAC also inquired regarding the transition of messaging. From the municipality directed specifically toward. Visitors, the committee was advised that the ECC was to discuss that. Issue later on on Monday and to confirm. A process for adjusting that messaging. At this time, members of the. EAC extend deep thanks and appreciation to the DEM, the Deputy DEM, our CAO. For the quality and frequency of briefings provided to the EAC for the updates provided to council. And we also extend deep gratitude to all members of the ECC and to all municipal staff who have served the community. In such exemplary fashion during the course of presenting the agency, and of course will continue to do so. Until this matter is concluded. Part one, we'll say in closing the reception center, which I understood was to be. Transitioned out today was a hub of activity and the. Feelings of goodwill and support within that center were just astounding. I thank community members as well for their contribution to that was. That response by our Emergency Social Services to open the reception center was a tremendous benefit, I think, to. Those community members. Who made it down there to. The opportunity to use that service. Thank you all. That is the report of the Emergency Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure, I'm going to ask council here whether you'd like to take a short break before we go into any questions so we can absorb this. Or if you'd like to move on to further discussions right away. Okay, ready to move on, okay. I really appreciate the, the update. Does anybody have any questions going forward with the information provided today or any other questions around? The update. Would I cancel Wilson?
Well, I won't reiterate, but I would like to echo wholeheartedly what the mayor has had the thanks and appreciation to. All those involved in the emergency, our community has rallied together and, and. Has is overcoming this emergency and I really appreciate all of the residents and businesses that have. Made sacrifices to get us to this point. Really support the messaging that was put out last week. It was, it was a really challenging and involving time. And. We, we had to make, the committee had to make calls to, to get ourselves back online and. Really appreciate everybody who's part of that. I guess many questions, but I'll just throw out the first one. At this point. Do we know the current capacity of our generation that Atco supply?
Deputy Mayor Demoda, I'm going to refer technical questions to Director Don. She's obviously the one that has been in the ECC and has been on top of this. The entire time and so she'll have the most recent updated information and also the widest breadth knowledge of issue.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Given. Deputy Mayor Demoda through the councillor Wilson. The energy that we are currently seeing to the townsite from the generators that are, that have been brought in. Following the power outage from the transmission line. Has capacity to support our current needs. Having that said, my understanding is that any increase in occupancy in the town. Could mean different things. Based on the current available generator capacity. So as we've communicated in recent days, priorities have been set. On in terms of which properties are prioritized or based on load and what the system can accommodate. And if we do exceed generator capacity, we will be seeing some areas of town not having power anymore.
Okay, thank you. It is to respond then. I think Atco should be up to supply us with a number. I, I think at this point, we need to start moving forward to inviting. Visitors back and it goes, unfortunately goes back to. The request or the discussion with the, the Atco. Higher ups. They suggested that all required means are supplied in this scenario, but they are not. All required means would mean sufficient dependable power would be restored for business and. Businesses are struggling here and this is a really challenging time and a necessary month for businesses earn a living. So critical is debatable what, what, what that actually means and so. If we're currently have enough power for our current operations, that means we can't ramp up our, our businesses. So I would suggest that Atco. Is not supplying the. All required means that we need and we have to put pressure on to ramp that power up because. We will be opening back up businesses that are already welcoming. Visitors again and in my opinion, I think we have to get behind our business community and invite people back. But we have to put pressure on Atco to supply us the power that we need.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demoda. If I may follow up councillor Wilson, I think. From an operational perspective is, is, is the answer I gave you in terms of there's only so much power available when. Demand exceeds supply. We have a plan in place for what that means for the community. I think. Atco has brought in as many resources as were available, so. Sourcing out third party generators to bring to Jasper is what they've been in the business of doing to, to get us here. And there are technical complications which Atco, Atco is much better positioned to address, but. From my experience working with them on the ground, I can tell you that their crew has been. Working their hardest and seeking generators as far as California to bring to Jasper. So it is not. Due to the team that is responding to the incident that we're in this situation. I appreciate that. From a political and economic perspective, there might be some, some different avenues you might like to pursue and I would say that is a. An, an important role and a, a good role for council to be playing in this situation and. We are very much dependent on Atco providing different solutions or updating information and providing updates to the community. And I can say that in coming days, you can anticipate some of those to come, but I am not in a position to speak to Atco's plans at this stage.
I, I appreciate that response and, and before we move forward, I just want to say that, you know, I'm getting many questions as well from the community and. You know, what's council's plan? And I think, you know, some of those questions that you're asking councillor Wilson, we, we need to discuss. On a political level and, and come up with some recommendations and if one of those is a request to Atco. For exactly what you just said, but I think that we should form some type of ask and, and through administration or the mayor. Get some definitive answers because there are businesses effective and even though there isn't. A timeline where we're going to be reconnected. Fully to the Alberta grid and there are businesses and community members that rely on that. And so does our entire community. So we, I think we need to, to have a broader discussion on, you know, finding out. What that closer to what that date or the reality, whether it's going to be two weeks, three weeks or fourteen weeks. And I think that might, that is responsibility or that ask might come to our level. And I'm not saying that that's the true, I'm just saying that's what I'm feeling. Councillor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I, I agree with councillor Wilson. I know that these two months, September and October are crucial for business survival for the winter. I feel it's going to be millions of dollars that have lost revenue and I've had this question lots. I, I appreciate you answering. Um, Director Don and I, the question I'm getting from residents is why, why don't we have? Well, power, it's a big company that, and, and if the answer is they just can't find generators, then I, I guess that's the answer, but. It, it doesn't, it's a big company and I, I feel like we could be powered. I don't, but again, I'm not the expert and I do appreciate your. Your answer to that is the question I'm getting from residents.
Thank you councillor Hall. It looks like the mayor would like to speak your worship, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I am certainly. Healing interested in how we approach messaging particularly to visitors. And I, I recognize the continuing uncertainty. When I indicated that through the provincial government's inquiries we made at highest levels of Atco. With respect to resources. Response was that there is nothing else that they thought government could do to bring in because they have. As Mr. Don has indicated, attempted to source generators from across. It, it's not that they're just looking locally to find these generators. They are, they are looking. Very broadly. One of the issues, as I understand, is that. The. Generating capacity has always been a discontinue from natural gas. So they are looking for natural gas powered. Generators that fit within the system. And so while there might be other types of. Generators, diesel fuel, for example, they're not a match. And as we heard repeatedly, and I, I don't say this as an apologist for. But as we heard repeatedly and as was demonstrated by. Struggle to restore power. There were complexities trying to match different systems and apparently. The complexity of adding a different fuel source. Makes things worse, not better. So that's just one of the, the, the technical issues and I, I won't speak further about that. What I will speak to is. I believe our need to establish principles or criteria upon which. We will feel comfortable welcoming visitors back to the community. And it need not, in my view, any reconnection to the provincial grid. When we can provide sufficient, stable, reliable power. To the community. Then we should be able to transition back to welcoming guests. How we will determine that we're at that stage and not in town this year, that is open to discussion. And as councillor Wilson gave earlier, it would be helpful to have some numbers to put to this, so. We have a sense of what the total demand of the community would be this time of year. Normally something around seven and a half maybe lots. I'm unaware of what. The generating capacity is now, but it's, it's an element. Consideration in terms of, of what can, cannot be opened and, and invited. Added to that. I believe that we. Hold to those. Community members, businesses who have transitioned voluntarily to their own generators and committed to. Stay on their own power supply so that they become part of the solution and not a continuing part of the problem. And it's important to think that they, if not rewarded, it is incentivized for that. There is a, an inherent reward. They serve the community and their efforts are appreciated, so there is more power available. For more residents because some businesses have voluntarily removed themselves from the Atco generated power. But if they are no longer. Using that power, then I think that. We are obligated in some sense to find some way to allow them to restore their. We are obligated in some sense to find some way to allow them to restore their. Their business and get back home, recognizing the push that. As others have said, this is the time of year where businesses in this community. Start putting money away to get through a sore injury. And at this point, they're. Still recovering from COVID. So they they don't have the resources that. They otherwise otherwise know. So I I agree that. Need to discuss the issue. I think it should be a principle-based approach. Um. Establish the criteria upon which. We would be comfortable saying there is, if there is at least a. Sufficient, stable, reliable power which will. Provide an opportunity for us to start welcoming guests back to the community. I'm not going to give a date for or anything I've referred. Um. That we base it on. On principles and measurable targets. Um. But we need some information.
Thank you, Mayor. I went uh saw that councillor Mellet had his head of councillor Keller empty. Um. I'm not sure who was first, but I do want to say that I know that. Um. There are people in the community um that are looking for uh culpability and. Um. Who's at fault here and why this all happened. And you know, we have to understand that there's still an active forest fire in in our care and and all those. It might be dwindling um or maybe moving away from town. It is still active. So there there's still a little bit of. Um. You know, um. Urgency that we need to address there and be cognizant that, you know, we are dealing with artificial power, so to speak now. Uh generated power. Um. Inviting people back um at this moment um is something that I'm looking forward to. But we need to be cognizant that there are still other things happening. Um. Councillor Keller empty all the third in person and councillor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota, and I agree totally with uh Mayor Aron that we have to have some principle. But that's where we are. Welcoming all the reserve uh community. And during this time, we've had many international visitors who have been displaced. And they were here and their connections to go, whether it's on the train, the country here. Toronto. They went to Vancouver. Um. Walking out near to further trains to them. But you know, to a couple of buses that have. To be taking those guests that were here that can offer the train to run the walking on train. And had to go to them. We have people. Events that we still have to just for order to get on that train. You know, tour companies have been working very hard with the. While we're trying to reorganize. Uh people's lives, you know, so you know, these people have come from all over the world to experience Jasper. And we're asking them to leave. All I can say is I hope that we can include the guests that are here, make them part of our community. And um. They can avail of what is available and um. Everybody be kind to them. Be kind to our businesses, be kind to the staff. Um. I've heard some stories where. Staff are being blamed because we have international visitors. That's not fair. We're all in this together. So all I can say is let's be kind. Let's be nice to the visitors that are here. Let's. Show everybody what a loving community we can be. As we all step up to each other, let's step up to the visitors that are here.
That's true. And and also to mention the displaced uh amount of captors, people that that have come here, especially international captors. That have made this their destination, been planning this for quite some time. And uh you know, they that visitation makes up a huge. Uh proportion of how some of our businesses in the community survive as well. Without them here, uh people are also affected that way. Councillor Melick.
Uh. Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I just want to reemphasize that also the point about. Stable and reliable power, whether it be. Generated by our current generating system. And having a buffer. Between what that is and what our demand is. I. I'm aware that this morning, one of our businesses lost their generation. Which narrows that bubble. So as we approach. Welcoming other guests. We need to make sure that there is this appropriate. Um. Buffer in our community. Since we do not have um. A a brownout blackout and have to start from square one. So while there are a lot of businesses that are. Currently helping and assisting. Things go sideways. And like I say, that happened this morning. It could happen again to another business. So I think we need to be cautious, be principled. Have um. We need to care for those folks who are here. But I think we need to do it a a. An objective approach, working with that goal. Keeping this. Buffer. So that our entire community. Doesn't all of a sudden go into block.
Thank you councillor Melick. And yes, and that's, you know, a lot of people have been telling me that they haven't been using their washer or dryer or the dishwasher. Things like that. And you know, and and um some people have been telling me they're doing the wee hours of the night, so they're not putting too much stress on the gravage. I thought that was smart. Uh. But if we all started doing that. Um. So we we need to be conscious of of that. Um. Again, you know, there's uh been a lot of uh. Comments about culpability and I think that. Those are things that we can address once we get back up and going again. Um. You know, I I want to go back to ACO and you know, when they were first pitching. Um. Our connection to the provincial grid, they were very confident. Uh that this was going to be a very stable uh delivery. And you can see by what they're doing now. Uh to get resources here that they were very confident. In uh in that system. So um everyone's going to have a learning process through this, including ACO and uh. You know, whether where we're going to hold accountability uh in certain areas, that'll have to come out. Um afterwards. Right now, it's it's just a matter of helping each other like councillor Keller have said. Um. And then work together towards uh some type of plan forward. And I and I think that we need to help. Uh the community um. Benefit or at least get some type of uh relief right now. And. I don't know if it's going to be inviting people back right away, but uh we are towards a base industry and and there are people literally itching to get back to work. So. Uh. What's the plan is what I keep hearing. Um councillor Wilson.
Well, for me, it 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 does go back to what's available out there. And the the vague answer cu- currently is. The I do us uh me not acceptable at this point. I I know that that's what they've given you, but I think at this point we. I I would like to direct administration to go and get that number. What are we? What are we being supplied? And what the margin? Is friendly? What are we using? What's the what's the uh total capacity? Um. And then a an approximate amount of uh. What would be used if certain businesses came online? I got a la- laundry list of hotels and businesses that are currently on. Their own generator power and we can work with them to keep them on their own generator power and. Bring on, you you know, you know, the small, you know, who knows if it's a small amount, but the increase if we bring visitors back. Uh. Or when we bring visitors back, um we have to have that conversation. Really today, I think that. Um. We need those numbers sooner or later. We can't wait for another week. Um. So uh. Yeah, I I guess in short. Like to go back and hopefully. Also would agree that we. Direct administration to get those. Not hard numbers, but you know. Approximate numbers so we can know where we're what we're playing with and what we can. Uh. Hopefully bring online. And again, work with the the partners that are on their own power and keep them on their own power. Because I would suspect and. Yeah. Quote me on this, but. Anybody using their own generated power would. Hopefully qualify for. The disaster relief program. Um. You know, of course, that's in its early stages, but they're. Um assisting us in coming back online. So I would suspect that. We'd be able to or. The the disaster relief program would be able to uh compensate it, compensate them for that uh sacrifice.
Deputy Mayor Demota, I mean, just on the disaster relief program, I just want to be explicitly clear clear. Um. What our current understanding is, because it's really important that this message is consistent out to the community. Uh in order for them to be able to receive the best service. Uh. Our understanding from government is that the first step any business should take is to examine their own business insurance. To look for business interruption insurance or whatever sort of coverage they have. So so the government programs. Uh any government programs specifically disaster recovery programs are limited to uninsurable losses, losses that could not have been insured. And so businesses in the community need to be aware that the first step should be to their broker or adjuster with their insurance. Uh to discuss what the losses uh may be covered under the insurance that they have. And that if they didn't have insurance. Uh. The government developer is is explicit and minister was uh his staff was explicit in this. The the. Government is uh not backstopping. Um municipalities uh or businesses. That could have had insurance but chose not to. So I think that, and I don't, that is, you know, I don't uh I don't do that to be the heavy, but I think it's really important for the public. Clearly understands that the first line for loss of of revenue or any other business interruption is your private business insurance. Um. And then if there were things that you just couldn't have insured for. That's the type of thing that. May be covered under the disaster relief program. Uh if the government designates it, there is one. So I just want to make sure that's explicitly clear out there in public so that everybody's getting some information.
And just shortly briefly to follow up on that, maintain pre- precise records. So you know, from day one. Start, I keep talking to those records and.
Right. Um. I do have some questions and it's along uh the service delivered here. And I could be completely wrong with my numbers, but from my understanding, our old power plant. Used to provide, or at least to my knowledge, fourteen uh megawatts of power to the community. And um I think what we're being told is that we only require seven as a whole. So. My questions are, uh was that uh delivery uh so inefficient at the time that by the time we the power got to Jasper that. Uh it was providing the required seven megawatts? Um. Or is the new um transmission that we're receiving here twice as efficient? And you know, like. Regardless of those numbers are the numbers, um. You know, we're dealing with with different variables here. And I think it's, it may be worthwhile uh probing to see. Uh what our need is with the other entities, the other businesses that are providing their own power and what's actually needed for the community. You know, as much as there are like still some more threats in the community, I I'd like to see some visitors welcome back here. Especially if they can start to see mountains outside. Councillor.
Um. Thank you Deputy Mayor. Demota, I think there's another process. Um. If we discuss. The report from. The emergency advisory committee and it's been read into. The uh documentation, the report actually, I believe we. Should probably recommend that we receive the report of the committee. And make sure that it's a part of our minutes. Um. So the public has access to the written document. Um. As well as the um the Zoom meeting recording. Um. And unless um. There's a further discussion at the point that's appropriate, I'd be happy to make that motion.
I'm not sure I understand it exactly, but. The rest of council, let's have the line of vote in favor.
Except for report that's information.
Councillor.
Councillor. Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I did hear a potential motion coming from councillor Wilson that I would support. Direct the administration to. Looking to exactly what we need, what we need, what we have. Did that come off the table? That I I I heard you said that you might be willing to make a motion for that.
Yeah, would a motion be required? Um. Let's say, yes, I will make that motion that uh help uh committee direct administration to. Um. Bring back uh. Data on. The power that is being supplied, like the. The the max power that, you know, uh is being supplied. Uh the current usage and um the. Uh approximate. Amount of power that would be used if um businesses were to come back online, sorry, businesses were to welcome visitors back. Uh. Keep it in mind that we work with businesses uh that are currently supplying their own power. Uh to remain supplying their own power for the foreseeable. Future. And we can um. I guess it's getting long-winded, but uh. Let's put a list together of who is supplying their own power, you know, the large users, and I can start that list, but. Who's supplying? And I'm sure you guys do have uh mu- much of it already, but let's have a list of who's supplying their own power. Um. Willing to uh continue supplying their own power and um. So then we can use that number. Like, so we wouldn't add that number to the. Uh approximate uh increase in power once we. Bring visitors back.
Mr. You go ahead, please.
Yeah, uh just in terms of uh make sure that administration is clear on our question. I think that there may might be a couple in there and it might be helpful for everybody. Both council has a vote on that and and for administration wants to make sure that they follow up on exactly what council has asked for, break that apart. Think I understood that there was a motion specific to. Direct administration identify the current capacity. Of the uh uh power capacity under our current conditions. As well as our current utilization. Under our current conditions. So that's how much power can ACO supply right now? How much are we using? So that.
Yeah, we'll make that first.
Yeah, I I think there are a couple of ideas and they're they're linked, but they're distinct. As well. Um. So maybe we stop there and then we can make sure uh frame in the second part. So administration is absolutely clear on what is at council.
Well, what I was going to suggest was that. I would like to accept the motion. That we received. Emergency Advisory Committee update as information. Take a brief. Moment. Get our next motions in order so that we can have a proper, two proper requests, I guess. Um after a break. So are we okay with that? Just so that everybody's clear and we have a direct. Motion. Okay, so uh councillor Melick, you moved that uh. Committee received emergency advisory committee update as information.
That is uh my recommendation of my motion, yes.
All in favor? That's uh moved. I would like to adjourn for a ten-minute recess. Uh. We'll make it a solid eleven to come back at eleven. I've got uh ten fifty nine. Eleven ten. We'll come back.
There's a twenty minute recess?
You know, I was just gonna say, I I noticed at one point um that that um. The mayor still has all the power to cut off other councillors on. As much as I wanted to shut people down, I don't have the power. As deputy. Okay, uh so we're going to continue on um. Under seven point one, emergency advisory committee update. We've uh accepted that update as information. And uh we have, we might have a couple of motions coming forward from uh councillors.
Thanks for the time to uh uh put them together. Uh. So my first motion would be to direct administration to um. Request from ACO data requesting current max capacity. Uh that's available from the ACO generators. As well as current usage.
Okay. All in favor? Now, opposed, that's carried. Thank you for that. You have another motion?
Yeah, I have two more, isn't it? Um. Second one would be to direct administration to compile a list of current properties. Uh on independent uh.
Councillor, you're you understand the motion? All in favor?
Maybe have an opportunity.
Oh, sorry. No.
I do understand it. And I'm inclined to vote in favor. But. It is. I believe a bit of a moving target. I believe a bit of a moving target. So, as we heard from Counselor. Melneth earlier today. There is at least one business. That was connected to its own power source, but that power source has failed. So what is it that we're counting and when are we counting? There are a number of properties, of course, that have. Have either had or that recently acquired their own generating capacity. Uh, and that's, that's a wonderful bit of news for the community as a whole. But there is the continuing question of whether they will be able to maintain that separate capacity. So when we count. Are we counting? Those who have generators in the lane? Um, are we counting those that have generators that are actually working in the lane? And I. Again, going back to counselors, counselor Melman's really valid point about being. Required to consider a buffer in the system. That buffer will depend upon the reliability of the separate generation. And so. I think it's a bit of a, of a challenge for administration to go open and count. What's there when, but they count one minute, like the garden. So I, I just throw that out there. I'm not sure how we nuance the. The direction to recognize that. It's a snapshot, and that's the best it can be, but it it may not be a continuing state of affairs.
Yeah, to follow up on that, uh. The list would would be compile a list of generators that are supplying. Like power to their business, not, you know, the one-off uh, uh, generator that you're plugged into, you know, that say we're using residentially. There's many businesses I think are using those smaller generators, but the the list would be a a list of um. Businesses that are supplying their own power, have the ability to continue to supply their own power and are willing to. Continue to supply their own power. So th- these are larger generator uh, um, capacity. You know, we're not talking about the, you know, the small. Captain generators, etc., that people are just relying on to keep going with goal. They've gone out. They've uh sourced or they already have sourced uh, and were uh, already had um. Uh, power. Sufficient enough to power their whole operation and are willing to continue. So that, the motion is still. Short and clear, but um. Larger idea is. Working with our business partners to maintain their power generation. If our wording changes to start to invite visitors back.
Your worship, are you satisfied with Counselor Wilson's question? Then after I hear from you, I'm gonna go towards Mr. Given and ask him if he understands the intent of them.
I believe that I uh, thank us, thanks uh, for asking Deputy Mayor. You don't have the motion, but could I ask Counselor Wilson? To reread the motion as for clarity and and then I will respond further than.
Uh, the motion is to direct administration to compile a list of current properties. And businesses on independent power generation, um. That are willing to. There, that are able to continue to supply their own power, um. For the foreseeable future.
If if I might um, suggest a friendly amendment, um. To direct administration to compile a list and report back to council regarding carry on. And in that way, it seems to me that it opens a door for administration to give us in a report. Um, the, the variability of the numbers that they compile. Hopefully, Mr. Given has understood that. That nuance, um, and we'll be able to hear a report that takes that into consideration. And on that basis, I would be. I am going to. I'm eager to support the motion, um, subject to. Deputy Mayor, the vote is questioned to Mr. Given, which is one of all.
I accept your friendly amendment.
All right, that's good. Does anyone else, would anyone else like to speak to Counselor Wilson's motion? Mr. Given, do you understand the uh, the nuance of the request?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I would.
Okay, um, do you have anything to close? All right. All in favor? And you, oh, and you have a third motion, sir.
Uh, third motion would be to direct administration to request uh, an updated timeline for Atco on the reconnection of the uh. Generation line.
Anyone, would anyone like to speak to that? Mr. Given, you understand the motion? All in favor? Yes, that's carried. Okay, um. I have a motion. I would like to direct uh, administration. To uh, find. The detailed environmental impact analysis. That Parks Canada conducted. Uh, with Atco. Um. On the interconnection project that was conducted. And the reason I'm doing this is I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of inquiries and and. And movement towards that, um. And instead of starting from scratch, once uh, you know, we're all fully powered and things are going forward, if we, if we. When we get there, um, I'd like to start gathering some information now. I have shared uh, an impact study with council and uh. And administration on uh, the work that Atco did ten percent to uh, Parks Canada and the municipality at the time. Um. But uh, I can't seem to find any information, um. On that, other than on the Jasper National Park website that addresses the interconnection project. And it says on June twenty second, twenty eighteen, Parks Canada approved the Atco Electric Jasper Interconnection Project. In Jasper National Park after completing a detailed environmental impact analysis process. And considering feedback from the public and indigenous community. So, um, you know, I I haven't been able to locate that. But uh, again, so I would like, my motion is going to be to direct administration to, sorry?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just want to identify you're gonna need to ask some of the people for the chair.
Oh, right. So uh, I would like to. Renquish the the chair to uh, Mayor Island, maybe, to take the meat over so I can make a motion. Please excuse me. I was so involved with reading that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor D'Amore, and then for my benefit. Can you repeat the motion, please?
I would like to uh, move that committee direct administration to. Get the detailed environmental impact analysis. That Parks Canada conducted for the Jasper Interconnection Project. Uh, to be made available for council. To be made uh, available for council to review. Period. Do we have, do we have it? Initiative.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor. D'Amore. I might, um. Before I. Set the motion and open it for debate, suggest that. A member of council might want to make a suggestion of a friendly amendment. Um. To direct administration not to get something, but. To attempt to locate. And provide to council. Um, what you have requested. I I presume that it will be available, but we can't directly get something. Um. But the recognition that, that probably knows where to dig and look, um, absolutely, and if we find it, which I hope they do. Um, they can produce it. So just a slight wording change. If that's acceptable.
I will reword my motion with uh, those comments. I will withdraw that. Motion and I would make a new one possible. Okay. The committee directs administration to attempt to locate the. Detailed environmental impact analysis. On the. Atco Electric Jasper Interconnection. Project. And provided to council.
Thank you for that motion, um. To the debate by council with respect to the motion. I have a question, um. That I will ask, I suppose, on behalf of the administration as well as on my own. Do you have any sense of, of time of administration who is still currently. Engaged in managing, um. An ongoing power emergency, and as you noted yourself uh, earlier today. There is still fire on the landscape, um, and things could still change. Um, our ECC is still activated. Administration. Has lots to do still. To get through the current emergency and then transition back to some of the. Malice. And so I don't want to leave a suggestion that. This direction. Overtakes existing circumstances. Uh, yes, this report. Um, will be important, but more in the form of time than today or tomorrow. So. We leave without understanding that this is a task, um. For the days ahead, not the task for the after or tomorrow.
Well, that is correct, and and uh, my intention is not for this request to supersede anything that is in motion already. And. Um, as I stated, um, I don't want to start from scratch, uh, when we have to start looking into. Uh, culpability in that. And I just, I want to understand more so of what. Uh, transpired to uh, you know, accepting the decision and then what were the agreements made? Um, and uh, what's actually, eventually what actually happened uh, in the rollout. Um, there are some community members that are concerned that uh, maybe the recommendations weren't followed exactly. So, um. This is for uh, something when it becomes available. Like I said, uh, the uh, the environmental assessment was made. Um, um, it's, it doesn't appear to be available online, at least to to the degree where I can find it. So, um, at any time that it does become discoverable, it would be appreciated. So, no rush by any means right now, but definitely something that we should consider uh, looking, thank you.
I'll just speak to the motion then before I call a question. I am going to anticipate that Parks Canada. Is pretty likely already looked at this and it should be available, but. It may not give. The information which um, the energy people are, are looking for, but that's not to say that. It couldn't be produced and we can look at it, but. I I don't think that we should expect that it answers. The questions to come, but fair enough, we can, we can still.
I think the intent right now is just to have it as information.
Is there any further debate with respect to the motion? On the called question, all those in favor? Not opposed, that is carried, and I return the chair then to Deputy Mayor D'Amore.
Thank you, and I appreciate the teamwork in assisting me, um, as we go through the, the agenda, the little rest, it's been ten minutes. Um. Does anyone else have anything to add to this discussion, uh, seven point one? On the agenda, Counselor Wilson.
Um, I would just like to speak to um, or, yeah, yeah, speak to the um, timeline on um. This alteration of messaging. I know, I know, uh. Uh, the EAC as well as the ECC, um, probably way ahead of us here, um, but I just wanted in public, uh. Ask question. Are we moving towards uh, altering our messaging? Um, and how soon do you think we could uh, see? Um, some changes in that?
I think, thank you, Counselor Wilson, uh, to you, Director Nadel, please.
Deputy Mayor D'Amore to Counselor Wilson, thank you for the question. I was just on the phone with Mr. Jackson from Tourism Jasper during the break, um, and and we are well-connected and 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 well-aware of. Of the circumstance and situation that this puts our tourism operators in. And um, we are now. I'm I'm saying this with moderate confidence. I've been spending time with Mr. Shepherd at Parks. Low moderate, high confidence is a good way to qualify your statements. With moderate confidence that we are hopefully out of the acute phase of this emergency, as in hopefully. The worst is behind us and things are starting to level out a little bit, and we do recognize that. We're still on generator power. It is not. Um, a- as reliable as the transmission line might be, but we are also not in the same situation as we were last week, for example. So we are considering changing our message today. That is uh, part of the reason I'm here, to hear council concerns and hear different aspects of of this conversation and make sure that we're positioning ourselves in a. In a way where we're leading the community with with that messaging, and I think we're well positioned to do that. And um. We no longer have the uh, eleven AM media scrum was something that was driving our timeline for updates for. The last number of days, but that is no longer the case. So we're taking a bit more time today to make sure that we can adjust and. That transition will be based on um. Whatever happens next, but we're certainly not looking to do a repeat of our. Of last week's messaging, and that should start being reflected today and to be refined. In days to come, of course, as the situation dictates, but also considering the input from council, from the EAC, from our partners at Tourism Jasper, which. Um, I have nothing but praise for Mr. Jackson. He's been very cooperative, very forthcoming with sharing his concern, but also. Very on top of sharing our information and during the emergency, more acute phase of that emergency, it was a, it was huge to get that message out to our visitors. So. Um, so thanks for the question, and today is the answer.
Thank you. Uh, before we move forward, I do have a question uh, for the EAC and uh, just. If I may, uh, your worship, I defer to you. Um, when you had your discussions with Miss Madder, um. Who was representing Atco as the incident commander, um, she was able to provide uh, responses, uh. That were satisfactory to you. Was there any indication that there were any uh, supply issues? And I don't mean to to catch you off guard with uh, being able to get us back connected on the grid and and that there might be any delays. Uh, due to getting um, things like processors or necessary equipment to get us up and running. And I understand that. In your document that resources, all the resources necessary were available, but does that include uh, proper parts and equipment that will. Uh, get us up and going properly, to get fully connected?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor D'Amore. I can assure you that members of the committee. Did not require about processors and transformers and. Screws and bolts and all of that stuff. We asked generally, do you have all that you need? And. It was to that general question that the assurances were provided. Um, again, when we met with provincial representatives. The associate minister, um, under to take the same type of question back to Atco and return with the same. Generalized response. generalized response, which was we have the resources that we need. We didn't get a list of parts that were required. We didn't ask for that. I've seen through photographic evidence that they have helicopter swinging poles. So I'm quote unquote, but cannot tell you precisely that if they can acquire a helicopter, they can maybe get a processor. They didn't say that they were short of processors or anything else. They said they had what they needed. And to some extent, we we chose to rely on that because we can't ask a question about every detail thing. So I I take it from the responses that we have received in the provincial government, as you see, that the the reenergization of the transmission grid line is not likely to be delayed for long term. She was the expression.
Okay. Well, and maybe I should have just phrased it. Was any of that information provided to you? Not that I anticipated we asked. I saw that Director Nadel had her hand up and I would like to defer to you if you have any other information to be able to, but I just mentioned.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. And Atco has not indicated that they were lacking equipment or physical resources. So they haven't asked us for any of them in any event, but what I wanted to add was that I think the biggest factor that impacts the timeline for Atco right now is access to the site. So considering that it's in the middle of an active wildfire, they've had access to a good portion of it, but there are segments that are still unsafe to get into based on the wildfire situation. And also just to give you an idea, one of the bridges was burnt. There were hundreds of trees on the road, so clearing the way so the Atco crews could get in there. So they've been flying in obviously to assess the damage and make plans. And they were busy putting poles together and assembling infrastructure at a different location while they were waiting to get into the wildfire and the wildfire area. And Parks Canada has been very cooperative in letting them have access, flying them over to see the line. And then we even had firefighters clearing the road is my understanding. So all resources were deployed to enable Atco to get access and do what they need to do. So I think it's not supplies. That is the the concern on the timeline, but more so access given the current wildfire.
All right, that's great. And I appreciate that information. And before we end this, I do want to say that, you know, I am very grateful for how everyone has come together to work on this from the municipality, Parks Canada, Atco, and all the people that have come here to fight the fire and you know, the ripple resources that that have been made available to the community. I'm grateful. And I have to say that many of the comments that I've heard in the community is that the municipality and Parks Canada in conjunction have upped their game with communication. And people are very grateful to have the frequency and the quality of information that's come forward. So accolades in your direction and thank you for keeping the community at rest on our current situation. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just before we leave this agenda, I I just wanted to take an opportunity to express appreciation at all levels. Firstly, I think all of council has learned to appreciate that when an emergency strikes, it has to be managed, not governed. And that puts council in a different spot. And I appreciate that our staff has stepped up to manage the response, which they are required by legislation to do. And they've done a really effective job. Again, I go back to not just managing the electrical issue with Atco, but managing the community response, particularly the emergency social services, planning implementation, and the working of the reception center. And I appreciate the response overwhelmingly by residents who have responded with patience, goodwill, kindness, and support throughout. Appreciate the response by the tourism sector for all that they have done to contribute to lessening the roads so that others can have access to a limited supply. They have adapted their own messaging to respond to that of Parks Canada and the municipality. And that is greatly appreciated. And it continues because as you indicated earlier, Deputy Mayor Demota, there is still fire on the landscape. It is still subject to change. It is not under control and that has to be a part of a nuanced message. I appreciate the recognition by Councilor Melnick of the need when we look at criteria for inviting visitors back to the community than we for butter in the electrical system. I appreciate the questions that have been posed for Atco so we can get better understanding of how we might configure the criteria for reopening. And I appreciate the fact that in this community, we have responded as a whole. And I hope that people will recognize and do recognize that there is not a divide between tourism industry stakeholders and residents, that keeping businesses viable is part of the lifeblood of the community. It is more than just businesses that are at stake, although they are. It is the reputation of the community and it is lives and livelihoods of individuals. So yes, any individual in town needs power to refrigerate the milk. They need the grocery store to go resupply the milk. And they need a job in wages to buy them. It is all interconnected and it has been, I think, and I appreciate that it has been a community response to a really serious emergency. And I am so appreciative of the way the community has responded. This is a an opportunity that comes only now and again to express that really deep appreciation to the entire community, all sectors of it, as a united and unified community in the face of a really serious power outage emergency.
Thank you for closing us off on that, Mr. Mayor. Now that we've completed seven point one, I'd like us to move to seven point two, the municipal energy manager update.
Good morning, everyone. The purpose of my update today is to talk about the energy management assessment report for the municipality of Jasper. In some sense, I will be adding to the conversation of energy efficiency and energy management, but from a different perspective. So the energy management assessment was conducted in Jasper on July fourteenth. And before I go into the findings of the report, I would like to just quickly talk about what is an energy management assessment report. While you're, if you're following the principles of strategic energy management, there's two things we want to think about is identifying projects and opportunities that would decrease electricity and natural gas use quantifiably. And also looking at from a different perspective, which is the processes and the systems and the systems that are there to achieve those reductions. And that's where the energy management assessment report comes into picture. So it's mainly a self-assessment of the municipality. What that means is we're not comparing ourselves to anybody else. We are comparing ourselves to what we, what we, where we want to be or what our goals are and where we are at this moment in time. And what can we do to get there? So we have self-assessed over 12 different management areas and we'll talk about them and we go to the spider chart eventually, but we've self-assessed our municipality on those twelve areas. And we've also got recommendations from the group that facilitated this conversation, which is MCC AC to clear result. And we've got 21 recommendations to actually reach our goals that we have identified that we want to reach. Jumping over to the findings and conclusions. So without going into too much detail of how the score is calculated, you can, there is more detail in the report as to the individual criteria, but municipality of Jasper rated itself at about 57%. What that means is we are 57% there to the goals we want to meet in year one. That is typically a median score for municipalities in the first year of the municipal energy management program. And it also shows that Jasper is willing to embrace growth towards energy management and they're willing to improve upon the current systems and practices that are in place. There is a very strong inclination for energy management with support from administration, and that was another finding of the report. We already have two lead certified buildings and I think that's the goal we wanted to achieve for that which we have met. And as I mentioned earlier, based on the discussions we had in the assessment report, there were 21 recommendations provided to help us continue to build a robust energy management program for the for the next year. And also it was identified that there was opportunity to increase employment, sorry, increase employee engagement and communications regarding energy management activities, energy efficiency, and all those kind of opportunities to the internal staff and external stakeholders, the public and council, et cetera. So jumping over to the spider chart and I'll quickly go over how to look at this chart. So you can see the 12 areas that we rated ourselves are on the outside. There is a black dotted line, which is the goal that we want to achieve. And the blue line is where we are. So the goal is to reach those black lines by the end of year one of the program, which is in April 2023. And along with that, there are some recommendations that go along with it. So I'll give council a brief moment to go through those criterias and ask me any questions or clarifications if needed. And if there aren't any, then that would be my report for the day.
Putting a hand up for myself. Thank you very much for providing us with this information. I think this is, it's good for the community and I think this is great. For, for the members of the community that don't know, Mr. Con, this is for us. Con, our municipal energy manager. I like the detailed analysis here, just to understand the spider web a little bit more. The black dotted line is where we want to be. And the blue line is where we are right now. Now, is there a reason why other components like the policy charter goals, planning and budgeting, things that you know, aren't on where the dotted line doesn't reach the outside of the web? Why those are kind of like more secondary towards priority than something like the employee engagement?
Yeah, there is a reason for that. So there is a timeline in which we want to achieve these goals and the timeline is the timeline of the program that I'm here. So when we had the discussion with the directors, we evaluated where we are at the moment and what is the realistic goal we can reach in the first year. And it was at the level two. Start of the next year, we will, or the next year of the program, rather, we will, we will do one of these assessments once again to see where we are based on where we evaluated ourselves initially and then increase the goal to three if you wanted to. So we would push it up saying, yes, we've achieved what we wanted. And now we want for the next year to move up another step.
I like that. Low hanging fruit is still nutritious. It's true. Does anybody else have any comments or do we still need some time to reflect? Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I do appreciate that response. I've been wondering the same thing about why our goals would not be three across the board. But I understand that it is part of timing issue. And so it's not that we won't try and achieve trees in other areas, but not necessarily. But one of the ones where I see a bit of a disconnect is between procurement on the one hand, which is a three and planning and budgeting, which is only a two. It's difficult, difficult, I think, to procure without a budget. And so I wonder whether we ought to look at, are we positioned to procure what we need in the short term if our focus on planning and budgeting is not at the same level?
That's a good question. I think the question. There is a little bit of clarification needed in what procurement and partnering means. So procurement basically is talking in the realms of if we are buying anything new, have we included a component to review if it meets our energy efficiency goals? So in terms of maintenance, day-to-day maintenance, if you're buying, I don't know, for an example, a pump, like are we in project? What are we doing? Are we incorporating some sort of criteria to say we're buying the right kind of equipment and not, you know, buying the cheapest one available, but rather putting the effort to buy the most efficient one available that will return in the long term. So that's what procurement talks about. And planning and budgeting is specifically talking about are we proactively considering energy efficiency, energy reduction projects in the planning and budgeting of, are you planning and budgeting? So there's a little bit of difference in those two items there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Melnick.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Demota. And thank you for the detailed report. I do see relating to the same topic on page 12 in our agenda. Or specifically in the planning and budgeting that there is, that is part of like the fourth quarter planning for long-term capital projects, where I think you're talking about, you know, that procurement aspect. But I see something else two bullets down, which kind of intrigued me. And others, the review, review setup of an environmental reserve fund for the municipality and also makes reference to the Town of Banff Reserve Fund. I wonder if you could give us a one minute, two minute summary of how that fund, A, what it's for, B, how it worked? And if it's something over and above the budget itself, or is it something that we budget for every year and echoes into a separate fund, I guess is the best way of me putting it, that's part of the budget process, but may not be spent in a given year?
At the moment, I actually do not have additional information on the environmental reserve fund. I can follow up and find out more details about the Town of Banff, the Banff Reserve Fund and how it works. But my basic understanding is they have some amount associated with any environmental initiatives and that's how it works. But I can look into that further and provide that information to council.
Great. Thank you very much. And I see that, you know, the actions of four different areas, the few acts, check plan, you know, very well laid out to get us to that point, I think, in the first year, supporting getting to those points where we want to get to.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mel. Anyone else in council would like to question or comment on the information we have in this? Your worship.
In the absence of further questions. In the absence of further questions, I'd make the motion that committee accept the energy management assessment report for information that was startled when I saw EMA on the page, like that intended, given all that's going on in this context. Emergency Management Agency, but I make motion to accept the report for the future.
Thank you. Anyone else uh would like to comment on the motion? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are now approaching noon. Traditionally, this is when administration takes a lunch break. Um, I'm not, uh, well, I mean, as far as, you know, municipality as a whole, those, uh, I just, uh, on a regular day. Uh, just wanted to see where council was at on wanting to move forward, taking a break for keep going. Are you okay with? Okay. Okay. All right. We'll continue on to uh seven point three, the public transportation. Would like to speak to that, Mr. Given.
That will be me, Deputy Mayor Demoda. Uh, in front of you, I have a request for decision and recommendation is that committee and council approve the memorandum of understanding for the provision of public transportation services with Parks Canada as presented. Um, attached, you'll see a draft of the MOU, uh, we've gone through full cycles with partners of parks. And other than the general legal and legislative terms that are required, um, the MOU finds uh the area of interest probably most to council is the roles and responsibilities for each party of the MOU. I'll speak to that briefly, um, but ultimately speak with purpose of having an MOU in the first place. Uh, this really is a prerequisite to the municipality uh delivering any kind of service outside the townsite on the parks lands outside the townsite. So there needs to be some agreement in place in order for that to happen, and that's the, the sort of foundation for the MOU, but beyond that, it also speaks to what the municipality will do and what Parks Canada will do uh in this arrangement. Um, and important to note that any of the responsibilities or roles here are subject to further council decision-making and budget allocations through every regular process. So um and that's acknowledged in the MOU, uh, the both parties still have their own decision-making processes to go through. This is really just developing understanding of, of what we uh intend to work together on. So specifically for the municipality, the MOU includes commitments for completion of the transit transportation feasibility study, which is underway right now. This council will remember that you have supported your administration conduct. Uh, it commits us to fair procurement processes, uh, providing uh oversight on of the management, administration, administration operation of any public transportation system. Uh, we would have commitments for the safe operating condition of all system components uh to seek green alternatives for transportation vehicles. Uh, we would also have uh commitments to managing the business operations of any uh system as a not-for-profit service and that we would undertake collective marketing communication. With conducting marketing communications, fair collection leadership. So really the basis, we would uh operate the system as a not-for-profit, uh seeking green vehicles. Uh, we would ensure that everything is conducted in a way that is transparent and in accordance with both the concerns of parks has around their procurement, but also the standard conditions that council has set for municipality that were required in municipal legislation. Whether it's certain to parks, uh, they would provide contributions to the system through assisting for transit planning and route design and designation, infrastructure developments on their lands as needed and where their budgets allow. Uh, they would also have, they're also willing to make a commitment to seek funding within their budgeting process for financial contributions where possible to the operation of the system. So again, that is not a commitment to a specific amount, but is a commitment to seek funding through their processes. Um, they also uh are providing in-kind support for municipal grant applications that we may submit uh to support the system. And so I would imagine that would look like parks endorsement of those and uh that demonstration of that partnership, which could be very helpful applying at a federal level. Um, and they would commit to public promotion of the transportation services uh and additional in-kind support for data collection where possible. Um, the agreement poses a five-year term, a five-year renewal, uh, which would give the municipality, I think, a reasonable amount of time that we could plan um services around. Um, and of course, the both the municipality and parks have a goal of facilitating visitor and resident transportation uh through the townsite and, and to adjacent attractions and locations to an affordable, accessible and green alternative to private automobiles. Uh, and that really is what led to the, the dialogue around this MOU. There are no financial commitments associated with this recommendation to adopt the MOU. As I said before, any commitments or startup of a service or other investments on behalf of municipality would come to council through the regular council committee and or budget process for your decision-making. Um, but this really is a request for council's uh support and approval of the MOU so that the municipality and parks uh can have an understanding of the bounds of this partnership. Um, and the next step that uh the community and council would see would be the delivery of our feasibility study, which will inform recommendations administration referring to for budget this fall. Deputy Mayor Demoda, that's all that I have on my part in answering questions.
Thank you very much, and uh thank you uh for working collectively with Parks Canada and getting this drafted for us. But when, I'm wondering if any counselors have any um comments or issues or uh things that they'd like to see changed within the MOU? Mayor Ireland, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demoda. Did you just happen to be looking my
My skin?
I, I do have um I have partial comments if I, if I may, um, beginning with, of course, the obvious, um the name of the party of the first part will have to be changed. Um however, extending from that, um even with that change to His Majesty King of Canada, um, we do have a clause there that says here and after referred to as Parks Canada, but then you see that that was largely ignored in the opening two paragraphs, so I would suggest that if that is to be meaningful, um, all the references to the region should just change to Parks Canada because that's what it means. We added that, and it will flow better, I think, if we say Parks Canada throughout the document. With respect to um details, I would ask that there be some further consideration of roles and responsibilities under Article Six. Um, Article six point zero one B contemplates that the municipality might contract out the service. Um, which I think is reasonable. I imagine us actually providing the service, we will contract it out. Um, but then there is maybe a disconnect with um subsection C, um, which might instead indicate that the municipality or its contractor will be responsible for um day-to-day things. So we don't, I think, we don't want to leave the municipality responsible for day-to-day operation needs of a private contractor, but that would be a recent fix. Um, similarly, subsection E, um, ensuring that all the components are kept in good condition and fully operational and safe should be the responsibility not of the municipality, but of the contractor. We might have some oversight, but again, we don't want the contractor to be safer to jump across our bus. With respect to subsection J, I would certainly appreciate some further definition of what that is intended to mean that it will operate as a not-for-profit. That's sort of open-ended. Um it is going to, I hope, generate some revenue. If it generates more revenue than expense, I think that will be a good thing. It doesn't mean some individuals would profit, maybe it goes back into the system or, or something, but it that phrase to me um would benefit from some sort of parameters or definition. Um, Article eight is um an insurance clause, which is fine, but I I might suggest that we include in that that um contractors will similarly be required to, to hold that level of insurance. And I, I might suggest that the two million might be five. If, if the bus has an accident, um five, even ten million might not be the level of insurance. And if we are at the end of the chain, um, that's considered that is need for municipality. And I think those are all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think those were good comments, and uh I believe that um even if we wanted to put a number in there, the insurance company um that would be insured would probably dictate what the minimum requirement would be regardless, I think. Do you have any feedback, Mr. Given?
Uh, no, I think those are all useful comments, but I think maybe just important to remember that this is um setting out between Parks Canada and the municipality, the expectations of each party. Um, and so I think fair to include all those contractors as the business were suggested, but really it is, is it municipality that's responsible for this or is it parks? And it's clear that the municipality is responsible for the system and the stuff. And we have latitude within this MOU to choose how we wish to deliver the system and the stuff. But we can either do that in-house, the, the MOU retains that latitude. So uh I think that's a uh a improvement for that clarity. Um and uh certainly if we enter into any contracts, we would have contracts between municipality and our service provider uh that would stress about those kind of things. Um, and uh I think all the others are perfectly straightforward. I don't know, your worship, if there's in, you know, about the level of amendment that council would like to cede to this. Um, with respect to our article, point zero one, does say shall be not less than. Uh, and so it does provide that opportunity based on the advice probably of our insurers and our capacity that our insurance could go up to. Um, but I think parks wanted to know that we had some insurance, which of course as municipality we do. Um, and we would uh ensure appropriately for the type of activity and ensure that the contractors did. So I think uh all those comments are well received. I think that they are easy to incorporate. Um, and uh yeah, I, I, I don't know that there's a specific need for um then as amendments. Um, certainly administration can capture those, uh revise, and then uh bring it to council and revise for that.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Waxer.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Jaci Okem, I was, um, I've marked and still not entirely clear on six J, um, with the municipality shall operate the public transportation system as a not-for-profit. Um, I wasn't, um I was thinking that it, did it mean on a not-for-profit basis or as a not-for-profit organization? With the A, if, um, I was left a bit confused.
I think it would be the first, uh, on a not-for-profit basis, uh, and really, which really got to what uh Mayor Ireland was talking about it. Um, in an ideal world, the system would offer, you know, operate that where revenue exceeded expenses, but any revenue is reinvested in the delivery of the service in the system. Um, so I think we could add a definition of not-for-profit, and we could probably tidy up a little bit to clarify that the intent is to run uh the system on a not-for-profit basis where any um revenue above expenditure is reinvested in the system. Um, and, and clarify that for any reason.
Good point. Uh, Counselor Miller.
Um, well, I've tried it, but this point has gone off twice. I understand my due sense regarding the not-for-profit status. Um, I don't understand why we wouldn't run it at a profit if we could. Um, with grants and, and with um opportunities to, to assess a charger or contact an operator, um, there needs to be uh for an operator, return on investment and also the ability to um maintain equipment. So having a, a not-for-profit reference in there um may deter us getting an operator um to be able to, to take on this contract. So we may be doing a bit of work here uh with finding that we get to a point where there will be an operator who want to pick up the contract. Preference for me would be urgent, not being there possible.
Well, I'm assuming that that's not for municipal profit, but a good contract someone else would be there, but Mr. Given may want to clarify.
Yes, thanks Deputy Mayor Demoda. Um, you're certainly on the right track there. Um, first, I think that this is a almost a prerequisite for Parks Canada. Um, they have concerns about um profit on the use of public lands is a, is a primary concern with them. So the idea that they're giving over public lands to a for-profit enterprise really changes the nature of the discussion. And so this idea that the municipality itself is not looking to profit off the operation of the system. We may hire, uh, we may hire or deliver services directly, but if we did hire, I think there's a, a reasonable understanding that the operator that we hire will have profit in their contract with us. But they will not be running, you know, the system is not intended to derive a profit for the municipality as a public service. So really making a distinction, no, and I mean, if you want to take that whole line of thought down, the individuals that work for any, either the municipality or a private contractor will get paid. And the private contractor would have a, you know, fee for providing the service, and that fee would have some profit in it for them. But the municipality itself is the intent of the municipality coordinating and participating in a service like this is not to derive a profit, offset property taxes per se. It's to deliver a public, the public service. So I think that that's the distinction there. Um, again, this is not a contract between the municipality and a service provider. You know, the definition of that, uh, and the, you know, the amount of profit that would be allowed in the terms would be um described and um set out when, when and if the municipality entered into a contract with a service provider. So again, I think we have to keep in mind that this is a memorandum of understanding between two government entities. Um, the municipality that gives the municipality the latitude to decide how it wishes to deliver the service, including contracting a provider to operate the service on our behalf. And the arrangements between the contract, a contracted operator, the municipality would be a separate legal document.
Well, I could see that, uh, if we wanted to charge for the portion that would be on the land that we rent from them with uh nullifying on a fee that then we would, they would charge us for operating outside the town boundary. So I think those two, uh, with this agreement would kind of uh default each other. So we're back to, to zero again uh with that, but I understand the, the agreement there. Uh, Mr. Counselor Miller.
Through sending the intent of, of the not-for-profit status, then Article seven basically says we're on the hook if it doesn't make money. And that we're basically the ones that are going to be financing this. Um, although parks shall seek funding to make contributions, that it doesn't indicate an equal partnership towards any shortfall um in this current agreement. Which, which perhaps would be a concern that uh both parties are taking a risk. Um, but at the end, the financial risk sits with municipality.
Very good point. Counselor Waxer.
Just one other quick question. Is the words where possible necessary in seven point zero two? If, if Parks Canada shall seek fundamental financial contributions. Um, because it is only Because it is only. Asking them to seek funding, not to provide funding. But I just wonder where possible. Just kind of. Really. Makes it more ineffective.
Thank you for that. Counselor Waxer, Mr. Given, do you have some information on that?
I think the idea that the intent of seven point zero two is to. Make clear that parks will seek funding. I suppose. If the possible, it's not possible. So, you know, it's maybe those words are irrelevant. The commitment that's made in seven point two is that Parks Canada will seek, shall seek funding. Doesn't say that they should provide funding, which is the the distinction. And that's actually the the sort of operative or. Point that council should should. That should be front and centers. There's not a commitment from parks to provide funding as. Counselor Mellet pointed out, there is a commitment that parks shall seek funding. And so I think the the words where possible are. Maybe. Irrelevant, but you know, or extraneous, but. They're not going to see funding or they know it's not possible.
Okay. So from my understanding, the process would be if this goes through. The municipality puts a request or proposal out. With. Hopefully a budget in mind. And somebody applies for that. They can do that, working in profit for themselves. We have a contract with them. Things fall apart on their side. They're still contracted to pro- provide the income that we require to stay. Neutral financially. At a break-even point because we're not for profit. So technically, from my understanding, is that we're responsible for making this project viable, that if we contract. Outside of the municipality to provide the service, that we're still. Really not on hook.
Deputy Mayor Demota. I think I would say that we are venturing out of what this document does. So there's been a number of questions that really built arrangement. A hypothetical at this stage arrangement between the municipality and somebody who might contract the right service. So that is a couple of steps down the road. Because A, the council has not given any direction to administration about what type of service. And who might best deliver those services. Those are things that would come forward in the feasibility study and expect to bring further information to on that later on. And. Any contractual arrangements with a third party. With the third party would be between the municipality and that third party as we enter into contracts with lots of third parties. The intent of this document is to say, is Parks Canada responsible for any operating loss? And clearly, based on this document, no, they're not. It is the municipality's responsibility to ensure the operation of the system and parks is making a commitment that they will seek funding. And if they can find funding, they'll provide funding for the operation of the system. But that's that's we, that's the limit of what this document is really trying to describe. There will be other legal arrangements or there may be other legal arrangements that would follow afterwards. But they're not describing this all.
Thank you. The purpose of my, I guess, direction there or. Was to to help appease Counselor Mellet and others who might have a concern. And I understand that that might be a process further down the road. You know, as we don't have anything in place yet. So thank you for for that, your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota through you, Mr. Given. Again, just going back to this question. What we might mean, that is we. Including Parks Canada. With respect to that, item six point zero one J. And leaving aside any discussion of. Independent contractors, then I recognize that they will be given for some profit. I wonder whether as between the municipality and parks. Recognizing that you indicated that. And the phrase that you used, that this is a must-have or. Or something for Parks Canada. That's that's not the version you used exactly. But I wonder whether whether you might consider with them. Phrasing something to the effect that the municipality shall endeavor to operate. The public transportation system. On a full cost recovery basis. With any excess of revenue over. Expenses reinvested into the system. I would hope that that might give Counselor Mellet the comfort that he's looking for. We don't want to be losing money. We'll try to do it on a full cost recovery. And if we exceed that. We'll put it back into the system. That that leaves aside the fact that if we hide a contract with the contractor, of course, we'll. They'll only make a deal if it makes money. That's a given, but. Rather than trying to find not the profit, just state what it is that we need. And what I think we need is. We'll do our best to make this full cost recovery. That. Wouldn't include all of our expenses. And if we do better than that, we will reinvest in the system.
Thank you, your worship. Does anyone else have any comments? Or? Concerns that they have with the MOU? Is anyone comfortable enough to make a motion to? Direct this to council for approval with amendments? Given, or do you want to see it back here again? Revised. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Demota, I'm comfortable making a motion as follows that. Committee recommends council approve the memorandum of understanding for the provision of public transportation services. With Parks Canada. With revisions. As discussed at today's meeting.
All right. Does anyone? Do any counselors have any comments or concerns they'd like to address in that motion? Right? I'll call a motion then. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. We don't have any other comments to make on. Public transportation. I'd like to go to seven point four quickly and discuss. Alberta, Japan Twin Cities Municipals Association. We have an attachment. Who would like to speak for?
Mr. Mayor, I can speak to that and if I need a support, I may look to Emma who. Wrote the report and has been working on the file. As council knows, the municipality has a longstanding arrangement with the town of Hakone, Japan. And we are also members of the Alberta. Japan Twin Cities Municipals Association. Counselors Waxer and Mellet attended the most recent conference of that organization. In June of this year and council provided a motion directing administration to return to a future meeting with recommendations. Regarding with regards to hosting a future conference here in Jasper. Administration has reached out to the association. And identified that they are looking for a host community for the 2023 conference. Administration is has looked at the last time the municipality hosted, which was in 2015. The association has been providing approximately a thousand dollars to hosting communities to support the conference. The conference does have the opportunity for user fees or for registrant fees for attendees and. Administration advises that it would be possible for municipalities to provide additional gift and kind support through administrative resources. That said, there is no current, there are no current funds in the budget for this. Potential sources could be the Hakone Restricted Reserve, which exists and that is typically used for. To support direct. Activities with Hakone, our sister city, the council could consider using that. Administration is not recommending it because it would leave the deficit of funds available for any partnership activities that might happen over the course of this term. The recommendation is that committee recommend council approve hosting the conference 2023 and. Direct administration to include $6,000 in the 2023 budget for the purpose of hosting the conference. So the recommendation is really that council refer to budget at $6,000. You would be able to see it and consider it in the context of overall budget decision-making. But that it should be funds that are additional to the activities of municipality. Because there is no other existing source that would be appropriate. This would be. The cost of of that in 2023. Additionally, there may be opportunities to sponsorships, which could reduce the amount the municipality may have to provide. But our preliminary budget shows that $6,000 is likely to be the. Amount of. Cash that would be required to support after. Registered fees are taken into account and expenses that could be reduced again, as I said, by looking at sponsorships. But administration wanted to ensure that we're following up on the direction from council in order to get this to you so that you can choose to refer to budget and make your ultimate decision. In the context of the overall budget presented to you this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Mayor, with your consent, I'd like to defer the chair to you momentarily as I deal with matters.
Thank you.
Are there any? Questions of? Mr. Given with respect to? Be the best for decision. Regarding hosting the. AJTMA conference. Counselor Mellet?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank. Emma for putting this together and fulfilling the. One of the items on the motion whisper council. This does give us an opportunity to review this. Again, at the budget time, once it's in the budget. Prior to making any commitment, from my understanding, to actually say we are going to host. And I guess getting it into the approved budget is the first step, so. Unless there's further discussion. While I would put it on the table, I did make the motion. That committee recommend approval. Go ahead.
If I may, before you make a question. Had I not assumed the chair, I would have suggested this, but. You might incorporate it. Mr. Given spoke to this that. This would be in the budget for approval, so not be approved budget, but I. I believe that the wording of the of the motion could be. A little more careful about that because of course. We all recognize that we don't want to. Keep sneaking the budget and appear at least to have been making decisions before we do the same. Proposed budget, so. I would have proposed that the wording be that. Committee recommend council approve hosting the AGTMA conference in 2023 and direct administration to include $6,000. In the 2023 proposed budget to be presented to council for approval.
With those additional words. I can definitely make that recommendation. Where this would be. Including the $6,000 in the proposed 2023 budget for. Council consideration at that time. So happy to make that recommendation.
Thank you, Pastor Nala. So that is the motion as it's understood. See nothing to indicate otherwise. I'll call a question. All those in favor? They're not opposed. That is fair. Thank you. That.
Great. Man, this is before we move forward. It was regarding pathology, but not the motion on. Table, but as this is in front of us now. And as the committee discussed. Any future plans to. Visit Hakone in future years. The the last, but the reason I'm asking last term. I think there was discussion of of planning. A delegation to visit. Of course, COVID got in the way and. I think at that time. The last visit. Was from. Hakone representatives. I think we're on, gonna next up to. To. Repeat the visit. So just interested to see if there's discussions.
Pastor Nala, do you intend to?
I was going to. Advise conversations that. Emma has had as indicated that we are considering, but we have not made any commitments to. Hakone that we would be coming. We've talked about it. Informally, Counselor Waxer and myself. But we've not proposed anything as yet and not formally approached Hakone saying we'd like to. Bring a delegation to Japan.
Thank you, Pastor Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. When was the last time we went press council to Hakone? Have you been? Been? Remember the last time it was?
I am. Relatively confident that it was not. During the last term of council. So it's the previous term. Was it even before that?
It's before I came on council. I came on council in 2015.
So it has been a number of years. The arrangement had been. Initially that it would be every two years ultimately, so once every four years. We would visit Hakone. Hakone business. So yes. But it has been for a number of reasons. Including the tsunami that affected. Japan all those years ago, the schedule went awry. But it is. Our turn, so to speak. And this year, July fourth. 2022 marked the 50th anniversary. And we had hoped that we would send a delegation. This year. But with. Lingering COVID and something that we weren't able to. Achieve that, the message might be that. Now is not the ideal time to visit Japan. But the the committee, I understand, is considering it, but hasn't made commitments and. I'm not sure that. Well, again, it could be a budgetary item for discussion later this year. It was, it was really hoped that we would be able to sometime this year, but. That is not in the public's issue. Anything else with respect to? To this item? All right. Well, thank you for bringing that forward. Thanks to to Emma who assists. Our committee in in that regard. Prepared the report for us. That takes us to agenda item seven point five. Parcel GB Development Information. Verbal report. I presume Mr. Given that that falls under.
Yes, thanks very much, your worship. Appreciate council give direction before to provide an update and also there was sort of appreciation that the developer was working through this with Parks Canada. My understanding is they have an approved development permit that they're working through some of the development permit conditions with Parks Canada. And once those permit conditions are met, the developer was comfortable with information being provided to council on the group form. So. That is the brief update. Just it is a long-standing item that's been on the list. Want to make sure that council's aware that administration is following up on that. And. The developers comfortable with us sharing the renderings of the project. In a public fashion after they've met the development permit conditions with Parks Canada.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. That can take us then to agenda item eight, the motion action list. I think before us, just for information. Is it near for?
We are in committee today.
Yeah, I I just happened to.
Exactly. So in terms of motion action list, there were. Exactly. So in terms of motion action list, there were a number of items for September. You can appreciate that, you know, issues have overtaken us as administration somewhat. But I know there was a reflection at your last meeting, that, but gosh, there's a lot coming in September. And obviously, administration hasn't been able to bring some things forward as we wish. We do still intend to bring a number forward. And if it turns out that they can't be delivered for our next committee meeting, then we would advise you at that time about what we would expect for a timeline on. There are a couple that I believe could be amended. The public transportation item with respect to the MOU could come off as that has been received and is going forward to council. There is also a portion under the Alberta Japan Municipal Twinning Twinning Municipalities Association item, item number three in there, consider hosting a future conference. That's been delivered and come off the list. I also wanted to write a couple of updates on priority ones. The council had flagged, obviously, private home accommodations and municipal position on that issue is top priority for the community and for council. Then during the last week, administration was in, I was in contact with Parks Canada, just to confirm that if we bring something to our meeting on the 27th, that, and, you know, subsequent council, for the lack of that, that would still be Parks timelines, and they said that it would, and so I'm sure council that that hasn't been lost. And we do intend to bring that to the last committee of the whole meeting this month. I've spoken to Ms. Malinchuk with respect to the utility model review and the review of the billing, you know, after billing cycles. She has assured me that she is still on line to bring that to that last meeting in September. And then another item was the community conversations indigenous education session. As council will know, we did have a session scheduled just because the uncertainty of the situation that administration is working with that provided to book another time, as we are seeing. Time for that. So I think that the changes, so those are the updates. I think the changes would be the deletion of the public transportation system item. The deletion of that one portion of the Alberta Japan Municipal Twinning Association, I have a number three there. And council could likely remove the indigenous education sessionist, as you've seen that, I believe, is in your calendars already.
Thank you, Mr. Given. As our deputy mayor has returned, I take this opportunity to re-reminish the chair back to Counselor Mellet.
Thank you for that. Counselors, do you understand the information that Mr. Given has provided? And is there a motion to move the task? The, sorry, the items from the action list that have been mentioned by this year? Counselor Keller, if he makes that motion, all in favor? That's carried. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Great. So now that we've completed the motion action list, and if everybody's comfortable with moving forward to agenda item nine, counselor upcoming meetings. Nine point one, council appointments to boards and committees. Does anyone have anything to report about anything going forward? Other than a name next week? Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have the library board meeting tomorrow. I will report back next week or the next chapter. What happens there? And I'm very excited to get back at it.
Thanks for that. Counselor Mellet?
This evening, I have a Yellowhead Historical Society and Museum meeting, board meeting, as well as Friday, we have a meeting for the TransCanada Yellowhead Highway Association, both will be attended via Zoom.
Counselor Keller, if he and counsel.
If there's any conversation, go ahead, follow, attend your chat room at the afternoon. Then on Friday, I will be attending Community Futures, Washington Headboard, maybe even Grand Cash.
Counselor Wilson? Thursday, another thought that was Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority meeting.
All right.
Myself, I did have a Community Futures meeting that I need to attend to Grand Cash as well, and as I just found out, the only staff member that I had to govern the has to be away from deployment, so I will not be able to make it to that on Friday, so. Anybody that might want. If you can make it to this, Counselor Wilson, Grand Cash on Friday? I'll check this thing. All right.
Not. Do you have anything, Counselor Waxer?
The work on the food security committee has been held up due to the current situation. So that timeline has changed, but we'll resume more decisions often.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Your worship, if you have any upcoming commitments.
Yes, thank you for that, Deputy Mary. Apologize, I have stepped already, but it was an emergency. But it's just a bear line. A bear in Pubs apparently was visiting Counselor Wilson earlier, civilian is now visiting further west. Counselor Wilson may have addressed this. The West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority has reinstituted in person meetings. There is one tomorrow in Hinton. Counselor Wilson and I sit on that as Jasper's representatives. Given the uncertainty of the ongoing situation, I can't commit to be there, but I understand that Counselor Wilson will attend in any event, and if I can accompany him, I will. We'll just see how the rest of the day unfolds.
All right. Well, I think that's all everyone has to report. We do have an addition to, oh, sorry, we have upcoming events under agenda item ten, Justice Park Chamber Conference General Meeting is September 14th at eight thirty AM via Zoom. On the 21st of September, there's a netmo meeting in Fairmont, Jasper Park Lodge. Fortunately, some of us will be late in Calgary. For those that stay behind, hopefully you can make it. The Alberta Municipalities Convention Trade Show, as I said, will be happening next week, September 21st to the 23rd of the Calgary Tows Convention Center. And then the 30th Annual Duck Race is on Sunday, September 25th. Are all the ducks sold, Captain? Not as yet. Okay. That's a, that's a good thing to do, especially, you know, low power. National Day for Truth and Reconciliation is very important to us, and that is on Friday, September 30th. Does anyone have anything that isn't on our upcoming events, Counselor Mellet?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. It appears the Prime Minister says September 19th will be a federal holiday to mourn Queen Elizabeth on the day of her state funeral in London. So that will be a holiday for federal employees, those in federal regulated industries, including banks, airlines, and crown corporations. And it'll be up to provincial and territorial governments to determine whether they will declare a holiday for other workplaces and schools. So I anticipate we'll see a decision coming from the province in the next little bit, whether Monday will be a holiday eventually, which may then affect daycare, schools, and potentially our employees.
Thank you for that. Can you give any, to give any direction or just get feedback afterwards? Administration would like to to move forward on that. I'm not sure how we proceed. This is our last council meeting for. Okay.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, can you just reiterate that, you see that question from?
The federal government has declared the 19th as federal holiday. I'm not sure how that trickles down to our responsibilities to give direction if necessary.
There's no direction required from council. Council should know that our agreement with QP does provide a linkage between holidays that are provided to federal employees and municipal employees, so that it's likely that that would also be recognized in our municipal operations.
All right. Well, thank you for the updates and your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mary Demora, through you, Mr. Given, and for counseling. If we come to the point where the municipality makes an announcement with respect to behaviors on September 19th. I wonder whether we have latitude to call it perhaps an official day of mourning rather than a holiday. Starts me upon, but we can call it a holiday. I appreciate the meaning of that. But we could select
Your worship, we certainly will make sure that any language we might have, municipality might have to communicate would be respectful and recognize the appropriate conditions. And I think it's likely that the federal government will have very specific language around that. I would be surprised. I think you're probably right, that it would be called an official day of mourning. Perhaps in other reports, it's being called a holiday or statutory holiday, because that's by definition, maybe what it would be, but I'm sure the federal government will come up with a forward messaging, and we will follow what that messaging is from the federal government.
Thank you, worship. Any other additions for upcoming events? Okay. With a quick recess so that we can get our things together here, we're going to move into, after that, sorry, we'll go to 10.1 and then we'll discuss how we'll move forward. Do I have a motion move in camera for integral mental discussion? Counselor Keller, all in favor?
And I think that we, oh, yes, we're in camera, I guess, I might say that it will be, it won't be necessary to come back to council as far as the years, so we won't be making any decisions or continuing on. So for the broader community and viewers watching online, this will probably end our session for today. Thank you.